We could get to it if we trusted professionals and cut out of their way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grady. This question goes to Mr. O'Grady first. And just following up on the concept or on the topic of streets. This is from a board member. Our streets are a mess, says the board member. Potholes that turn into lunar craters. A city report recommended an investment of $285 million a year for the next 10 years to repair this, but the city only budgeted $45 million. How do you intend to finance the almost $3 billion that according to this report is required to fix our streets over the next 10 years?
Let me focus on what's been going on. And a couple weeks ago on the internet was pictures of Mr. O'Grady with a shovel filling a pothole. Okay? So the first thing I do is I get rid of the photographer. It was sort of mom friends around with him, the photograph filling potholes. That's one more squeak pothole filled right there. We laid off 300, and I know we're laughing here, but it's, we gotta get simplistic and serious about things. And we hear all these statements here about we ought to look into this, we ought to do that, we need to look further and closer at this. I'm trying to speak in very direct ways, just what we can do tomorrow. They laid off 300 people from street services last year. There was a chap who came to City Hall, and he was crying while he was talking to City Council. Didn't understand why his days were being prolonged. He was crying. And he kept saying, "We do a good job. We provide a good service." Yet we have a City Council office that has 20 people. We have a councilman who makes $180,000 a month. And by some estimates, it's a package worth a quarter of a million dollars when you count in the pension contribution with the car and what have you. So, what would I do? I would cut council office staff by 20, divide by 2 equals 10. You multiply that by 15 City Council people, that's 150 guys with shovels right there that you sent to street services. What this city needs to do is start investing in people who actually do things and stop paying people who don't do anything. Go down to City Hall in the lobby. It's just lined with people all around talking. What are you all doing? We need people out doing real things. We have the same debate, by the way, in Los Angeles Unified, and they actually have a better record of this. They're actually moving people out of boundary and back into the classroom. So, those are my answers. They're very simplistic, but they'll get us there quicker than what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grady. How would you solve the gap of the $285 million a year needed for the streets versus the $45 million budget?
It's been my honor to write for City Watch, and I just wrote an article in City Watch on the retirement of Bill Robertson, the head of the Bureau of Street Services. I consider him to be one of the finance general managers the city of Los Angeles has had in a long time. And Bill Robertson was asked last year to prepare those numbers on what it would take to bring our streets up to the standard of a great city. And he presented a five-year plan, a 15-year plan, and a "you're never gonna see it" plan. And the City Council said, "Well, let's go with the 'you'll never see it' plan." At the same time, we qualified for funding and never cashed the checks and actually get disqualified from future funding cycles for not executing the projects. So that's a complete application of responsibility. Bill Robertson also went to the City Council last year during the budget hearings. I was there, many weren't. But he presented a plan where he didn't lay off staff, where he delivered city services, and where he did it with a reduction in his expenses. So he hit all of the numbers, and they said, "No, we're actually going to go with the shared mediocrity plan where every department suffers and you lose the city services you're entitled to." So the funding is there from the federal and state level to improve the quality of streets in our communities. We'd have a public safety impact. What's missing is political will. We are under siege from this pothole politics mentality where if you call up, you'll get your pothole filled. They know where the potholes are. They're measuring outrage. And we haven't delivered the message, which is, we expect streets that are safe, that get us where we need to go, on streets that are crossable and that are good for everybody. And so the plan is to actually let professionals do their job and remove the politics from potholes.
Mr. O'Grady, Mr. Box needs to report that working with the MTA, that they will fund improvement on Wilshire Boulevard before they start, very soon, before they have to deal with the issue of the busway because of the West Los Angeles refusal to be part of the busway system, which is the latest. It's the latest. But our side, we're gonna get the heavy, heavy problems on Wilshire dealt with. And every day I work on it. I'm proud that we're able to get Beverly Boulevard all the way from Manhattan West to that. I'm working on other parts of our district all the time. And we have to use a variety of funds. If it's a street like Western or Vermont, a Wilshire street that carries a bus, you're more eligible for funds, and I work to do that. But I also wanna make sure the infrastructure below that street is fixed, because many of our streets are over 80 years old. And sewer pipes are fixed and corrected. The water lines are fixed correctly, and it's a combination effort. And it's something that we always have to do. And as we've come to age now, it is much more difficult to see the total investment that has to be made. But I am someone who has constantly worked to deliver for the whole district and also worked to deliver for this district and will continue to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grady. Mr. O'Grady, you are, Mr. Box, you can ask me this question. Focusing on core services, Mr. Box, if revenues do not recover, which services would you be most inclined to cut? Mr. Box?
Well, it's kind of a loaded question, because I wouldn't be inclined to cut services. I'd be inclined to cut departments. We have redundancies in our departments. For example, the Department of Transportation, which is an ordinance department, competes with Public Works, which is then competing with the CRA on the same funding pools. So for example, when you go to safer routes to school or highway safety improvement projects at Caltrans, all three departments will have applications in the same staff. So rather than one department saying, "We'll apply," and the other department will say, "We'll do the oversight," and the third one says, "We'll execute," we actually cannibalize and then disqualify ourselves. That's no way to run a great city. So the Department of Transportation could be absorbed into planning, because after all, transportation's a land use issue. Traffic control could go back to the LAPD where it once was. Actually, traffic signals could go back to Public Works, because after all, they build the streets. And you could take the collection of revenue and give it back to the Department of Revenue. And so there, you've actually moved people to where they can be efficient and effective and increase efficiencies and the delivery of city services, and you've cut overheads so you're running more efficiently. This actually is, the study was done 10 years ago, and it was demonstrated how much money this would save the city of LA. And yet, that particular decision is one the City Council could make in a City Council meeting. It's not a charter amendment, and yet, that particular proposal has been kicked down the road, like so many other well-thought-out and researched proposals. So there's an example of an opportunity for us to cut costs and maintain our commitment to delivering city services.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Mr. O'Grady.
Should use the question.
If revenues do not recover, which services would you be most inclined to cut?
Revenues, as we see as a challenge. Has anyone had a good year economically at all? In here, we've all been challenged. So what we have to do is form partnerships. Partnerships with other government agencies, try to stretch your tax dollar. And that's what I try to do all the time. I do believe there needs to be an overhaul of many departments. There's a city treasurer, there's an office of finance. I want our city attorney, Newt Tannage, to be responsible for going after people who are not paying their debts to the city, who are not paying their bills to the city. I want an aggressive attorney's office on that area. That's the city's money. Right now, it's in an office on the second floor in finance. It should be someone who is tough and go after it, and Carmen Tannage is that person to do it. I support that. Some of my colleagues don't. I also wanna look at ways that we could reorganize Public Works, because it needs that reorganization. And I have the skills and the knowledge to do it. I wanna take the system that we have right now in street services, those simple little trash cans that you see at the bus stop, that should go to sanitation department. And that street cleaner that comes down your street, it should be in the sanitation department, because they're the same people who clean your drains. But all through the years, we've grown somewhat in a respectful way, but like all of us, we have to tighten our belts and re-engineer. And having the experience, I could fight for what is right for the city in re-engineering, which is done in the budget process. A budget is a plan, a plan of what we could do, our personal budgets, our city budgets. And that's what I wanna do and continue to do for Los Angeles and Wilshire. Thank you.
And Mr. O'Grady, if revenues do not recover, which services would you be most inclined to cut?
Let me start with a couple specifics again, because they're obviously lacking here tonight. The mayor has a full-time position to tweet. There is a tweeter in the mayor's office. That's all they do all day long, is tweet. I would cut the tweeter, that's number one. Just two days ago, there's a lady called Stacy Marble, I gather she works for your office. She was on Facebook most of the day the other day. It's right there on Facebook. So yes, I would cut the Facebook, which was in the hall. We have this department that gives out these, what do you call these things? The artworks thing?
Proclamation.
Yeah, so I got a proclamation a couple years ago, because I put a garden out in our school. I went to Daily Donuts to get a coffee, and they had a proclamation on the wall. I went to get my kidney stones out, and he had a proclamation on his wall. So, we're probably giving out way too many pro- 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 proclamations. So I'd probably cut that department. It's more efficiency, too. Two years ago in Los Feliz, we made a big effort to get rid of gas floors. And street services admitted, the Bureau of Investigation, that they just didn't have the staff. I designed an automated system where people could fill in a form, it would go right into his email, he could hit a button, it would create a letter, it would go back out to the file there. Okay? Zero cost, and it would copy everybody involved. This is the kind of thing we need to do. We need to computerize our city. Google does it all the time. Okay, we could do it, too. Just a couple more things. You know, when you've got a building on safety planning, there's all this contradictory rules, you're going back and forth, you've got to file separate permits, need to make it more efficient. Finally, we need community plans. We haven't updated our community plans in years. What's that cause? We've got variance all the time. We have constant exceptions and all the work that goes into that, because we have failed to update our community plans. And then finally, cooperative agreements. I talked about it earlier. The libraries need to be in the business of education. Need to break down those fences for LAUSD so that we're all in it together. And then, conversely, LAUSD can share their assets, as many cities already do, by sharing their schools in the evening for parks. Thank you, I'm sorry I went over time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grady. And, Mr. Box, you go first with this question. The cutting. Yeah, Mr. Box did. Mr. O'Grady, you go first with this question. This is a popular question. Regarding the NFL stadium proposed for downtown LA Live Convention Center, do you support the current proposal as it has been communicated? And please discuss the benefit the city's general fund would enjoy as a result.
There's no proposal. What AEG has to write a proposal, and they have to present it. Today, we formed a commission, a committee from the City Council, not just on the stadium, but the expansion of the convention center. Let's see if it's a good deal. I don't know. I don't wanna see taxpayers' money be used, but let's see what it can be. Because if we enhance it, mind you, what is so important to downtown Los Angeles is the repopulation of downtown, which happened with adaptive reuse, where they took all office buildings and put housing in it. Mind you, the University of Southern California did not leave downtown Los Angeles to go out to Pepperdine when invited in Malibu, or go down to UCI where Urbide is and locate. They stayed in the central city. That is a powerful institution. And now, up figure roll, you have Staples Center, you have the convention center. Does it make sense? Let's look at it, and let's put all the light onto this all. All this, too, could be us just looking at paper, because it's up to the NFL, which is made up of 32 owners, like a country club. And they have to say whether they want you in or want you out. And we've been down that road before, and they didn't want us in. So I would just say, "Look at it. I don't wanna use public money. Does it make sense for the convention?" Yes. Does it enhance people that maybe they come to a convention in LA and they go out to Largemont Boulevard and experience Main Street USA in our neighborhood? Does it make sense they come out Wilshire to the museum? I don't know. Do they go to Hollywood and engage in Hollywood? Does it make sense? Look at it. I do not support the use of taxpayers' money, and then today, I asked a serious question about bonds and what the bonds are, and bonds are taxpayer money, too. If we do approve it, not only want what Joe Wax wanted, this 1% of the arts, I have 1% for athletics. Because the great thing about the 84 games is what was left, the legacy, the foundation to help young people in a variety of swimming, running, gymnastics, etc. But remember, it's up to the 32. And also, there's a very good proposal by another man out in the city of industry. Thank you.
Mr. O'Grady, the NFL stadium question.
I think it's on running that we said, "I don't support using taxpayer money." What does the CRA do? CRA uses taxpayer money every day. If there's somebody who wants to build a stadium, and I'm sure it's a great idea, although I'm not a sportsman myself, you go to Citibank, you don't go to City Hall. Okay? I don't think when Jack Humphreleville was opening up his business, he went to City Hall to get a loan, he went to a bank. That's what I did. I went to Hayling Savings Bank on Washington Street, the whole building. That's where I got money. So, if you can build a stadium, if it makes sense, if it doesn't cost a dime, and I mean a dime to the taxpayer, then great, build the damn stadium. But let's, I think there's so much distrust built up over the years, and maybe Stephen can help me with this. If I'm correct, the CRA bought a building in Hollywood for X amount of dollars. 600. They sold it for 200 million, and then they, yes, they bought it for 600 and sold it for 200.
Hollywood Vine.
Yes, okay, wherever it is. Well, the money is gone.
There's 1601 North Vine as well.
There you go. You're editorializing, Mr. O'Grady. Anyways, the money is gone, okay? It's just gone, forever. I just wanna bring up another thing. A couple years ago in Los Feliz, we had a plan called the Melendres Plan. It cost 400,000. It had a hotel on top of the hill, okay? That plan's sitting on a shelf. That's 400,000 gone forever. Well, thank heavens, we don't have a hotel on top of the park. So anyways, build a stadium without taxpayer money. Great, knock yourself out.
Mr. Box, the NFL stadium question.
NFL stadium, there is no stadium. Sorry, I didn't mean to step on you. There is no stadium, there is no team, there is no plan. But we're already talking about $350 million of your money, thank you very much, for a non-existent team, non-existent stadium, non-existent plan. And while we're doing it, you know, forming a commission to study the non-existent plan, they're already in Sacramento looking for exceptions and variances. They're good at what they do, and they're not doing it here in our favor at all. So, rather than studying it, I think it's incumbent on us to set standards for the city of LA, after all, it's the greatest city, the most populous state, the most powerful country in the world. And yet, we don't have standards we can count on beyond a community plan or the master plan or for the plans that we've been banding about here. But seriously, a plan for the city, one where if someone wants to come here, and by the way, they all do, it's Los Angeles. The whole world's watching, and people are eager to be here. If we don't have a plan, not just environmentally, if we don't have a standard for an economic standard, a sustainability standard, a social standard, in other words, if developers wanna come to town and they can hit the standards using their money to build a project or a proposal or a stadium that actually benefits the community, then more power to them. But on the opening move, they said, "We're not doing anything, but we need some guarantee that million dollars of your money, and then, of course, we'll come up with something you really like." That's absolutely, completely unacceptable. And so it's incumbent on City Council not to form a commission to say, "Hey, what's going on?" But to actually set standards that they can reach for, because after all, it's the city of Los Angeles. So I think, as it stands now, not just no to using taxpayer money, but actually a guarantee that it's gonna actually increase or give us some revenue and improve the quality of life here in the community. And if they can't hit those high standards, if they're already going for exceptions, there are people that shouldn't be doing business in the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. O'Grady, you'll be first with this question. As you know, we live in a climate that is very friendly to bicyclists, and we have, regarding bike-friendly lanes in Long Beach, this question says that we do not have bike lanes in Los Angeles that connect to each other. What would you do to improve the situation of bike lanes for cyclists in Los Angeles?
I suppose I'd connect them, yes. Yeah, I like bike lanes, I like charos. I would like to see more of them. I don't really know what else there is to say. The areas that I've been involved in, and I'm not a cyclist like Stephen, is planting shit trees on streets in order to improve cycling, our pedestrian stuff. We need a tree canopy in this city. We've been mulling off years about this more than trees program. It's going on and on and on about it, and we still only have a little over 200,000 trees. It's pathetic. Okay? In Los Feliz, in the last quarter, my little tiny volunteer organization was responsible for almost 90% of the trees planted, and that was 48. So back to the bike lanes, connect those lanes, that's all I have to say on the matter. Thank you.
Mr. Box, I assume you don't need the question repeated?
I think we're good. You know, bike lanes are just one of the many tools in the toolbox, if you will, of things we can do to encourage humans to enjoy our streets. And there are many things we can do, not just bike lanes and, as you mentioned, charos, but there are things that we can do that are good for everybody. In fact, a law went into effect on January 1, the Complete Streets Act. And that says, when you improve a street, that you should actually improve it, and that it should work for everybody, whether you wanna cross a street on foot, whether you wanna take a bus, whether you wanna drive a car, or ride a bicycle, or even just sit down and enjoy the street. The streets should actually work for humans. That law went into effect, and yet, today, in the Transportation Committee, we're looking for an opportunity to exclude ourselves from applying that particular law to the city of LA. We're looking for an exception. So in the Transportation Committee, they actually moved forward without applying the Complete Streets Act. So I'm well-known as a cyclist in the city of Los Angeles. I've ridden these streets. I've ridden the Santa Barbara, I've ridden the San Diego, I've ridden the 101 freeway. You know, it's the only way to get through some stretches on the way north. And I'm telling you, our streets are mean for everybody, not just for cyclists. They're notoriously painfully acutely hard to navigate, however you're getting there. And actually, our streets are toughest for pedestrians. So our children need to get to school on streets they can cross safely. Everybody has a vested interest in us working together to make our streets work for everybody. And yet, today, the Transportation Committee is actually approving a plan that actually asks that the Complete Streets Act doesn't apply to the city of LA. That's a complete application of responsibility. So when we're talking about bike lanes, there's a larger systemic problem, which is a failure to actually leave and take responsibility for moving forward. More to the letter of the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. In my career, we're able to build bike lanes on the LA River. And there's a picture of my mom and dad, my aunt and uncle riding 1936 on the river. And now people can ride on the river, all the way to Victory Boulevard, out near Travel Town, all the way down underneath the High Period Bridge, down to Los Angeles. This should continue more. That's an important thing. I helped get it done. I helped with the partnership with the community, I helped with the partnership of other council members. On 4th Street, it's a bicycle boulevard from Cochran all the way down to Hoover. We have to make additional improvements there. People will ride that. People will feel safer if we make those improvements. Other streets should be identified, like New Hampshire going north and south, parallel to Vermont. Vermont, as I mentioned earlier, busiest north-south bus street. It's very tough to compete with bikes. Parallel streets, Oxford, again, in our neighborhood, should be one of those streets. And I'm working with our Department of Transportation, which today, on the committee approved a plan, which is supported by the Los Angeles County Bike Coalition. Strong support, little dispute with the horses, which we're working on to make sure we preserve the right for horses to ride on trails and not be overrun by mountain bikes. Other than that, it goes forward. So these are things that I have done and will continue to do, and I'm pleased when I can to ride a bike. When I worked for Mayor Riordan, I organized all the city ride bikes rides, and it was great. And as a councilman, during the summertime, we celebrate neighborhoods, because we have special neighborhoods in our city where we ride, which we encourage people to. And on the MTA board, when I was on the board, not only did I fight for the subway, I fought for the subway to open up to let bikes in on. Before I was there, they did not let them get on the subway. And I fought to get racks on the buses. And people are 27,000 daily riders in the city. And I think it's an important element of our city, especially our corridor. And the judge who lives on Kowenga in the northwest quadrant of Hancock Park rides his bike to the courthouse.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grady. Mr. Box, this question bears to you first. According to this, this board member, the budgets of the Los Angeles Police Department and the Los Angeles Fire Department are estimated to exceed 80% of the city's general fund dollars. If revenues do not increase, would you support keeping their budgets at that level, and why or why not?
It is absolutely imperative that we go to where our greatest expenses are, to take a look at what it's gonna take to balance the budget. So to go where there's no opportunity to recover is foolish, and that's what we've been doing. So with public safety, there are opportunities to improve services and at the same time to reduce costs. As I mentioned, traffic safety alone is squandering our public safety money. Firefighters should be there to put out fires, not address the fact that our streets don't work, not to address the fact that we haven't put our federal and state money to work improving our streets so that they don't have to spend so much time handling problems that aren't their primary responsibility. The same with the police department, they should be handling public safety, dealing with crimes, not the simple fact that we don't stand a very good chance of getting home in a motor vehicle. And in fact, even my police officers die in greater numbers in car collisions than from gunshot wounds. That's how bad our streets are. And so you see, if they were to focus on public safety, their primary responsibility, dealing with crime, dealing with fires, I think that we could relieve a lot of the burden and actually solve our budget crisis by taking a good hard look at how much money we spend there on things that we shouldn't be spending. The second thing is that we must act like adults and have a reasonable conversation with regards to pensions and healthcare. And we've avoided that conversation over and over, and I stand before you as someone who has actually part with people in this room on Measure B, where we went up against an IBEW International Brotherhood Electrical Workers initiated ballot measure two years ago. We had two months to work on it, and we defeated the mayor, the union, and everyone behind that particular well-funded ballot measure, because we were willing to confront very powerful institutions of power in the city of LA and say, "A monopoly for unions is not gonna work." I don't think anybody wants to take the city of LA to bankruptcy. It's incumbent on the leadership of both the unions, to represent the public safety people, and the leaders at City Hall to have that adult conversation. Thank you very much.
Mr. Box, Mr. O'Grady, according to the board member, the budgets of the LAPD and Fire Department are estimated to exceed 80% of the city's general fund dollars. If there is no revenue increase, would you support to keep it at that level, why or why not?
It's absolutely important. In our communities, which we, where Station 29 is, there's a two-and-a-half mile radius, and then there's Station 61, and then there's Station 58, and on and on. All those stations should be staffed. Historically, with the city fire department, we staff to a certain level. We've had to reduce that to save an overtime cost, which is a challenge. In the police department, the police chief, both Mr. Bratton and Charlie Beck, is instituted staffing in there to look at the overtime cost, because it's the dollar, not just what you said, that 86% of the tax dollar or thereabouts goes to people. Government is a people-run organization to help people. So with the police and fire services, I would work to keep that as a level is. I'd also work with other agencies throughout government to try to achieve that, because public safety is number one. You won't go to a restaurant at night if you feel you're unsafe. You'll come home and not go out in your neighborhood. You walk in your neighborhood, which is so important, this district, you engage in this neighborhood. So I think it's real important that we do fund that, and that's what I fight for first. If I look at you and say, "What's most important is your public safety, your public safety, your public safety," and we fail, then we don't, and all of us have to slow down? And as pedestrians, I all tell everybody, "Make sure you get the contact of that driver to make sure they stop before you cross. Don't believe a crosswalk. Don't believe in Moses as he fed the Red Sea. Make sure they stop before you cross. Safety first." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grady. Mr. O'Grady, you have a question, Mike, and you want to be.
It's not so much cutting the cost of the fire and police, it's making that money go further. Or nobody's saying we should cut the very small amount of police officers that we have in this city. It's seeing how we can deliver that same product and service more efficiently. If you talk to a police officer today, he'll tell you there's lots of ways that we can streamline the department. We can cut out paperwork. I think regular people these days, even rank-and-file people working in City Hall, they're willing to concede, to give concessions in this time of really tough economic times. The only thing is, they're not going to do it if the guy who's telling them to do it is little like a king. Okay? Governor Brown, he's kind of setting the tone right now. And I really like it. I think it's the way to do it. He's like, "I'm going to cut my own department, and then I'm going to come to you and ask you to cut yours. But I'm going to cut mine first." And, you know, some people say, "Well, that's kind of cute." It's not. It's leading by example. There's a guy sitting in a prison in China today. He got the Nobel Peace Prize. He's sitting in a prison. He's leading by example. Martin Luther King. You think he was at the back of the crowd and said, "You guys go on. I'll be there in a few minutes"? No, he was at the front of the crowd. That's what a true leader does. So I have to say, I don't understand why you haven't cut your salary all the time enough. I don't understand why you think it's okay for homeless people to be on the streets or for this city to be going broke and still living like a king. I just don't get it. I couldn't live with myself. There is a measure on the ballot right now, somewhat similar to this. It's called Measure L. I like to call it Measure L. Okay? It doesn't fund libraries. All it does is say, "We're going to fund the extra percent." We're going to have another big bickerfest next year fighting where that money comes from. It's the biggest lie. I sent a proposal from the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council, how to fund the libraries. I worked with Mr. Gomans and Mr. Romer of the libraries. We found the money. And we were completely ignored. So there is a way to keep existing police officers and existing fire department services and yet reducing the amount of money we spend on. We just have to have the will. And we need to talk in specifics. We can't keep saying, "We ought to look into this. Oh, we should set up a commission for this."
Thank you, Mr. O'Grady. I'm informed, given our time tonight, we have two more questions, and then we will have the closing statements. So the first of our two final questions, this in the area of sidewalk repair, and it goes to you, Mr. O'Grady, first. Do you support a do-on-sale requirement when a homeowner sells their home? This would require the homeowner to fix the sidewalks themselves before the time of sale.
We're looking at that right now, and I want to work with neighborhoods on this issue here. Prior to nineteen seventy-four, the city sent you a citation that said, "Fix your sidewalk." President Nixon, for all his faults, was good for cities. He started many programs in engaging the cities. He dumped a lot of money into cities. What the city did is said, "We'll take over and fix the sidewalks." We also have trees in the planet that uproot the sidewalk and cause great hazards. I have a thought that it's very important to try to work with the homeowners and almost, if we could, come back to that program where we could see a contribution. But also, I remember too, in my neighborhood when I grew up, there was a guy on a bicycle who would ride around and fix everybody's mason wreath. And I think we have to make it easier for people to fix their own sidewalk to reduce the cost. The biggest challenge in government is the overhead. And to try to reduce the overhead is the key. And as we go forward, that's what I will look at to do. But some people, you may think it's easy for them to say at the point of sale to do that. But it may be they're widowed, and they haven't had any income for many, many years. So each case may be different. In some neighborhoods, it certainly is very opportune idea. In other neighborhoods, you have to see how to best represent the needs of the people, and that's what I would look at.
Mr. O'Grady, do you support the do-on-sale requirement when a homeowner sells their home? It would require the homeowner to fix the sidewalks at their own expense before the time of the sale?
I don't support it, but I would approve of it because we have no money left. So this, you know, this complete long answer about whatever. We are broke. This city is broke. This state is broke, and this country is broke. So yes, we're going to have to charge for that. Just as we parents in Los Angeles unify today, we're putting our time in every day because, you know what? The government botched it all up. So, yes, and there's going to be a lot of other things we're going to have to do also that are going to hurt. And we need to start having the courage to do that, to sort of bring us back to some kind of equilibrium. It's just, you know what? It's just incredible how bad it's gotten. It's just, it's amazing how you can just talk about this as, "Oh, we're going to look into that. Look into this." We've been spending money like drunken sailors for years. Well, people, the middle class out here in the city, we've been saving our pennies. And now what we have? We have, in Marshall High School next year, fifty kids per classroom. Fifty kids. Okay? That's just, it's criminal. It's just shameful how bad it's gotten. And now we're charging for sidewalks. So yes, I would support it. And what I really support is starting to cut out all the nonsense, all of that, every last dime that we don't need. So then, maybe, we can go back with pride to our voters and say, "Look, we've cut it all. There's nothing left. We need you now to top it off." Thank you.
Mr. Box, do you need a question?
I'm opposed to the do-on-sale proposal for many reasons. Starting with, it's just bad. The second thing is, it doesn't work. The worst sidewalk in my neighborhood is at Hollywood and Western. It's a CRA SIM project. They're the folks that got the six-hundred-million-dollar building for two-hundred million dollars. They got thirty million dollars to kick in rehab at the Kodak Theater. And then fourteen-and-a-half, one million dollars for another. It just goes on. It's your money. And there, partnered with the CRA on the worst sidewalk on Hollywood Boulevard, a small little boulevard you may have heard of. It's kind of famous in our neighborhood. And it's the worst sidewalk. What you end up then with is sidewalks that are being developed or improved piecemeal. So we're back to the connectivity for which our city is so famous. The bike path that you talked of that goes all the way to Victory is also the home of the most famous personal injury lawsuit in the state of California that went all the way to appellate court and it actually set some standards for the city of Los Angeles because a cyclist discovered that it ends at a very busy intersection. It doesn't get you where it needs to go. Our sidewalks aren't connected. Our bike paths aren't connected. And even when we rehab streets, you mentioned Arden, the sidewalk is busted. So we actually resurface streets, but you can't walk on the same street. So it's so disconnected. Everything we're talking about tonight is connected. You can't fix one without the other. Public safety, public works, public health, streets, sidewalks. And as for the money not being there, it's somewhere. It exists. Let's put people to work. And I'll tell you, I know where it is because the city of L.A. regularly disqualifies itself for funding that our neighboring communities get. Long Beach gets forty-to-one per capita at the same funding pool as the city of L.A. And then we fumble on the project. They put their own city employees to work. We give it out to contractors and then don't execute. It's so mismanaged. I believe that this great city should have sidewalks. I believe the funding is available. And I believe we should get out of the way of the professionals that actually build streets and bring the money to Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Our final question before we have our closing statements. And we will start with, I always miss this up. We'll start with Mr. O'Grady. Given L.A.'s finite resources of air, water, and space, what is your vision of a future L.A.? That's the part of the question I like. More like Manhattan as a vertical city or remaining a horizontal city as it is now, or in another way?
Well, it's kind of a half-environmental question and half-part-of-life question. I'm going to go back to walk the walk again. Sorry to keep doing this. I built a new house in Los Feliz about six years ago. It's a greenhouse. Make our own electricity, make our own hot water. My jacuzzi is heated by the sun. It's heated to ninety-two degrees in the summer. I have groundwater coming from my laundry. I collect rainwater, so it's a water during the summer. I'm living in the life of luxury in Los Feliz, and yet my footprint is tiny. So this notion that it's either or, I don't agree with. We have an equator every year, and people come and they're like, "I can't believe it. You mean we can live like we used to and yet not destroy the planet?" So it is possible. You just need to have the will. In order to get it done, you need to have a leader who actually walks the walk. Al Gore, when he released Inconvenient Truth, Fox News took a helicopter, put it right above his mansion, his twenty-thousand-square mansion. He said, "See, he's telling us what to do. He's not doing himself." So that's not going to happen to me. They can put a helicopter on top of my house. They can see my clothes hanging out in the line. You know, I'm fine. I'm not too happy about that, but that's okay. It's a joke for you, but... Okay. With regard to the other thing, it's not just a high-rise city. It's not just one. It's a mixture of everything. We're obviously going to have greater density along the transit lines. The Thirty-Tenth Plan is there. What's incredible is, you can look at the Thirty-Tenth Plan, but our community plans, they're not even keeping up. So we need to update those so we have an actual plan that makes some sense. Right now, it's development by piecemeal. And while we're on that matter universally, the most ridiculous monstrosity, and I'm a real estate voter, so this doesn't make any sense at all. Supposedly, it's built by transit, right by the thing, except all the houses are at the other end near Griffith Park. It's impossible to walk from all the residences to the transit station. So yeah, it's about being smart. It's about being down-to-earth. It's about having a little bit of courage also. You know, you can't always please everyone all of the time. Sometimes, you have to stand up and be comfortable.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grady. Mr. Box, your vision of the future of Los Angeles?
It's true that you can't please everybody all of the time, but you certainly can have a standard that we can all grab a hold of and say that's what we agree on. And L.A. doesn't have that standard. So our general plan is just full of holes. Neighborhoods are divided on a daily basis, and people who care are just worn out fighting individual projects, exceptions, variances, and requests to do things that we know don't work. Our streets can't support us. And we're talking about densifying. If there's a fire in the hills, we don't have the water pressure to put it out. So when Griffith Park caught on fire, Nancy and I were the first two to get to Marshall High School to set up the evacuation center. The Red Cross couldn't get there until eleven o'clock that night. We lived very close. We rode our bikes in. We took our bags, and we set up the evacuation center. And what's very interesting is, we are unable to handle the emergencies that occur now. We know there's one coming. We don't have the infrastructure in place. We don't have the plan in place for what we have. So to talk about densification in Manhattan, I love Manhattan. I've enjoyed the times we've visited. But I really love L.A., and we live here. So I think it's incumbent on us to protect the character, the personality of our communities, of our neighborhoods, of our homes. And that's our primary responsibility. Serve you, the people that live here. Not the developer from Dallas, Texas, that did Hollywood Divine, or the one from Chicago that's working on Garfield at Hollywood. These aren't my neighbors. These aren't my members of my community. And these aren't the people that we should be servicing. So I think that, quite honestly, we have our hands full now fixing sidewalks, fixing our streets, working on our collapsing infrastructure, and investing in our future. And I don't think we have any business at all pursuing opportunities to densify without really taking a good hard look at first what are our priorities. Meanwhile, the incumbent voted twenty times last year to increase speed limits on the streets of L.A. Twenty times the speed limits went up, and you're getting advice on how to cross a street. So I'm telling you, there's something out of whack, and we don't have our priorities straight.
Seventeen eighty-one, forty-four people walked from Mission San Gabriel to the banks of the Los Angeles River to form the Guadalupe. As the city grew at its original boundaries, Fountain on the north, Eastern on the east, exposition by USC on the south, and Hoover on the west, it grew. But what did it really grow? It grew to be a city of great neighborhoods. And what's so important for this neighborhood is the Park Mile specific plan that this man helped write that made the difference to lower the densities on this part of Wilshire. And what also happened? HPOZs. I fought and helped. The first HPOZ in the city, in Angelino Heights, the first neighborhood. And then the third one, Melrose Hill, and then on and on. Neighborhoods is what we have to preserve in the basis of our city. Neighborhoods is what made people want to live here. You don't want to live in a building. You want to live in a neighborhood. And that's what we want. And it's not just us. It's in other neighborhoods throughout, in the south end of Los Angeles. People reclaim their neighborhoods. In the west did. In my own neighborhood, they reclaim it. It starts with neighborhoods. Densification should be in the central part of the city. I'm the person who has experience and have worked it. I'm the person who's worked with community to find the balance. Jobs are important, yes. And one thing you see too is this region of ours in the sprawl from Palmdale and Lancaster and Ventura and down Orange County. All that sprawl is now having an implosion. And you have seen people coming back, and they want to live in a city. And there's some great value to this. And the nice thing too about our neighborhoods that we live in is when they built the West Adams District, when they built this district in Wilshire, they built it with quality, that these homes can be restored. And that's real important. So to see the future of Los Angeles, and what I pledge to you is that your neighborhoods will be like they are now, historic and restored. That your neighborhoods will be safe and clean. That your neighborhoods will be a place that you want to live in. That commerce will be correct where it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do want to say that I have a radio show. And I'd like you to mention this in the beginning. I'm on five nights a week on eight-seventy KRLA. And you can podcast the show anytime you like by going to krla870.com. And I cover city issues one hundred percent of the time, unless Oklahoma's coming. That's it. We will start with Mr. O'Grady with your two-minute closing statement.
Anton LaBange's sign, the lawn signs. We're in a lawn sign competition right now in Los Feliz. It says, "Continue to love and enjoy Los Angeles." Right here, most of us are doing pretty well. I'm doing pretty well, okay? I don't have that many problems in my life. Let's be honest, most people are not doing that well in Los Angeles. It's actually pretty embarrassing compared to most cities in the United States. You know, there's a small portion doing really well. There's another portion that's been doing really, really badly. That's not right. That's just simply not right. Tom was at a Silver Lake Rec Center gathering a few months ago, and he said the reason for our budget crisis was China. It was India. It was global this. It was global that. You know what? Los Angeles calls this problem. Don't be blaming India. And some people like to blame illegal immigrants. It's our fault. We spent all this money. Now it's all gone. Okay? So what we need is somebody who's down-to-earth, who's willing to do what it takes, and is willing to talk in specifics. Okay? and is willing to talk in specifics, okay, rather than these sort of broad schemes. The way you fix anything, the way I discovered in my small business, is you just get going. How much time do I have? Two minutes?
Two minutes. I'm down to one minute.
You just get going, and you start fixing a little bit. How do you make something efficient? You get rid of the person who's not doing anything. Again, I think it's all about character. I am sincere to a fault, I think, sometimes. But that has never hurt me in this country. It's never hurt me making money. It's never hurt me getting things done in the schools. It's never hurt me getting elected to the Neighborhood Council or working on the Neighborhood Council. I don't talk out of both sides of my mouth, okay? I don't think I'm intelligent enough to talk out of both sides of my mouth. I don't know how you do it. I'm going to tell you the truth. My neighbor is not voting for me. You know why? Because he said to me, "Will you pave my street?" And I said, "No." He said, "Why not? Because your street doesn't need paving. We need to pave streets based on when they're needed to be paved, and street services should decide that." So let me just finish up. My name is Tomas O'Grady. I'm running for City Council, and I'm asking you to vote for somebody who's down to earth and will bring a little bit of straight talk and fiscal common sense back to City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, the Greater Wiltshire Neighborhood Council. Very important that you do, very effective on many issues. Thank all of you for coming out tonight, many of you I know. I want to continue the effort that I've started and the great opportunities given to me. I'm a public servant. I love working for the city of Los Angeles. I love engaging people to make them feel that Los Angeles is a valued place and also have that rub-off on other people. I also like to empower others to help in this cause of Los Angeles and the variety of issues. Many of you know my experience, and that's key when you look at what's happening right now, because the challenges that we have. So I ask you for your vote. I am committed to this job because I love my city and I love its neighborhoods. And that's the key. And I have the experience that it takes to get it done. And I look for partnerships in the future because we need partnerships and ideas. And yes, there's many decisions that have to be made, but having the experience and having to see what happened in the past in Los Angeles, in its history and its development, it's key. So you have a choice, and I hope your choice is Tom LaBange, because Tom LaBange works very hard for the people, all the people in the city, all the people throughout the city. And I'm proud of the relationships that I've had with people in the city and the support of elected officials that give me the support that has taken me further, because it's those relationships that help in getting things done. And you could say all that you want, but the thing you can ask yourself when you go home tonight, who is the one who's going to make the biggest difference in the neighborhoods of Los Angeles? And I believe I am, and I look forward to this campaign to get the election that needs to happen, which is great about democracy. These are fine men here who may have some ideas that I don't particularly like, how you personalize it, because I don't think it's a time to personalize it. It's a time to talk about issues. You don't like me, that's okay. But I know I work hard every day since 1974, summer '75, summer, and now tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we have talked about a lot of issues, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. We've talked about the budget crisis. We've talked about public safety.